Guys, what an honor it is to be here with you tonight in Dalton, Georgia. My name is Nick Jackson. I'm an attorney at the Finley Firm in Columbus. We also have an office in Atlanta and an office in Dalton that we just opened up a few months ago on Benjamin Way. So please come out and visit us, but we're so thankful to have all of you here tonight. You are all truly part of what is becoming a monumental movement in Northwest Georgia for environmental advocacy, whether you know it or not. Three months ago, we started this project with nothing more than an idea and a dream to really make a change in Northwest Georgia for the environment, because that's what every single one of you deserve. A few months later, we represent hundreds of individuals, hundreds of landowners whose land has been contaminated, and now, big businesses are acting. That's something we rarely see in the legal industry. Mohawk has filed suit against the manufacturer of PFAS 3M and DuPont. And just on Monday, City of Dalton and Dalton Utilities actually filed suit against 3M, DuPont, and even Mohawk and Shaw. And that's the reality that we're now living in because of people like you. Power is in numbers, and it takes numbers to effectuate change. So I'm so thankful for you to be here tonight, but I want to tell you a little bit about who we are. That's why I'm here. We're going to have Ben Finley speak tonight. We're going to have Bob Bocock, who is the world's leading water expert, and that's a true statement. I've spent a lot of time with Bob. I always tell people, I went to Alabama Public Schools, so you really got to bring it down on a fifth grade level for me to retain it. And Bob does that. I've spent a lot of time with him. We flew out to Houston together to learn more about this chemical so that we can come back to Northwest Georgia and make an impact. So really grateful for him and all of his knowledge. And of course, Erin Brockovich, who's a household name. But importantly, importantly, she's a real, genuine person. And I think that's what you'll find with all these people that are here, and they're PFAS Georgia T-shirts, collared shirts, and with us. Because it's important for you to understand the people that you're going to be working with for possibly years, right? And Erin is a real person who really cares. I've stood shoulder to shoulder with her, with some of you out in the crowd. As you told her your life stories, she listened to you, she heard you, she came back again, because it's that important to her. She could be anywhere in the world, but she's in Dalton, Georgia tonight. That's pretty cool. But my main job is, number one, to tell you about the materials that you were handed as you walked in. This is a PFAS Georgia folder that we have. There's a contingency fee contract in there that Ben will explain later. If you have any questions about that, please let us know. I know it can get really concerning when it gets into the fancy legal terms, and we're happy to explain all of that to you. There's also a lot of informational material in there. Please flip through that and let us know if you have any questions. But the main reason that I'm here is to introduce my boss and one of my best friends in the world, Ben Finley. I've known him since the day that I was born. My dad and him played a Little League baseball together, so they've probably known each other since they were six or seven years old. They were roommates at the University of Georgia. So he is truly one of my heroes in life. And so it's so awesome for me to see him spearheading a movement like this. And I want to tell you a little bit about who he is. Number one, he's one of the best attorneys in the state of Georgia. He is, to my knowledge, the only lawyer in the state of Georgia that represents individuals like you. He's a plaintiff's lawyer, but he also defends large corporations. One of our largest clients is the actual state of Georgia itself. We defend the Georgia Department of Transportation, which has hundreds of thousands of miles of roadways, and touched every single one of you as you drove here tonight. We defend them and wrongful death actions all across the state of Georgia. And they hire him. They've been doing that for over 30 years. He's a Special Assistant Attorney General appointed by a Republican Attorney General in the 90s. He's also a mediator, and I think that's one of the more important things that you will realize here tonight is that he's a unifier. And mediators, they take opposing sides and they bring them together to try to find a resolution. And that's why we're here, because there is a resolution to this problem. But importantly, over 20 years ago, my grandfather, who is 57 years old, he was cutting grass on a Saturday morning before he went to my Little League T-ball game, and he had a massive heart attack. He was a big, strong guy and played football at the University of Alabama, so it was obviously very, very shocking to my family. A few years later, news broke about a pill called Vyox that was on the market, and it was a painkiller, a COX-2 inhibitor, that was really widely prescribed and widely used in America, but it became known that it caused heart issues. And Ben went across the state of Georgia having town halls just like this one, where people filled the room, but he didn't know that my grandmother was going to be in that room that night. And my grandmother listened to what Ben said. She went home that night and she opened up my grandfather's high school gym bag, because he was a high school football coach. She hadn't opened it since the day that he died, and she found a vial of Vyox. In my family's darkest moment, we turned to him. And we've done it time and time again since. And he's here because he's genuine, and he's here because he cares. And tonight, you're going to see just a glimpse of that. But if you join us for this ride, you're going to see that time and time again, because that's the real him. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce my boss, Ben Finley.
Thank you, Nick. I appreciate the introduction, and I have since he was born, I knew his dad. I remember his parents when his dad used his bicycle to what is now his mother's house when we were children. But can you hear me with this microphone? Is it choppy? Is that better? Is that better? Okay. All right. I need to hold it closer than... No, I just... I don't think this is doing too good. That one better? A little bit? All right. Can you hear me now? Okay. Can you hear me now? Is this thing on? No, I just really am honored to be here to stand before you tonight and to talk about something that's so important, really to everybody in this room. And I think everybody in the country, and that is this PFAS issue, which is this toxic chemical that 3M made, and it's caused predominance of cancers. It's affected people in their lives. It is devalued property. It's gotten into the land and the water. It gets into the ecosystem where the chickens are exposed to it, fish are exposed to it, deer are exposed to it, cattle's exposed to it, and we eat all those things, and then we end up dealing with a lot of health issues. And because of predominance of 3M and the concentration of it in particularly Dalton, Georgia, and Whitfield County, we've seen some things that are very troubling. And we need to focus and work on this together. The way I look at this, and when I drove up today, and I've spent a lot of time in Dalton, this is such a beautiful part of the country. We used to come up to Northwest Georgia when I was a kid, and I've always loved being here. It is a gorgeous part of our country. When the 13 colonies were founded, and Georgia was the 13th state, this was before all of that, it was all Indian territory. It was all pristine. All of the rivers, all of the names are all derivatives of Indian names and Indian territories, and it was pristine and it was clean. And then, over time, companies like 3M in Minnesota created this PFAS, these other chemicals, and really corrupted it, really polluted it, and caused carcinogens to be put into the environment here. And what it's done is it's disrupted nature. I've got a strong faith in God, and I believe very strongly in the Bible and the way it reads, and I know many of you feel the same way. If you read the first sentence in the Bible, Genesis, Chapter 1, Verses 1, I mean the first sentence, first sentence in the Bible, it says that "God made the heavens and earth," right? "God made the heavens and earth," right? So God made all of this, but it's been corrupted. It's been corrupted, and why was it corrupted? I'll tell you why. It was corrupted because certain companies put corporate profit and greed over human lives and safety. That's just the bottom line. Made a lot of dead gun money, made it on the backs and been stepping on the necks of folks like you all and all of us in this room. That's what they did. And that's what they've done. I also know now, and the older I've gotten and more in touch with this, and a lot of y'all will probably agree with this sentiment, I'm 58 years old. I had my 40-year high school reunion about a month or so ago, and I can't believe I'm 58 years old, but I am. And I don't know how much runway I've got left, and I know a lot of y'all probably feel the same way. You don't know how much runway you've got left, because tomorrow's not promised to anybody. But I look at things and I see, like in the Bible again, Proverbs, Chapter 13, Verse 22 specifically says, "A good man," and it's gender neutral, but it was written as "a good man leaves an inheritance to his children's children," right? Is that right? That's what it says. All right? What's that mean? It means that you leave an inheritance to your grandchildren, you know? We inherited this from our parents and our grandparents, so what are we going to do? We going to leave this mess to our grandchildren? Is that what we're going to do? I've got two kids. I don't know how much time I've got on this earth, but I know that whatever breath I've got left, I'm going to spend it in this cause. I practiced law for 33 years. I've done well as a lawyer, and Nick can tell you about some things we've worked on. I represent the state of Georgia. My best friend in the world is Harold Melton, former Chief Justice of the Supreme Court. I was appointed as a SAG Special Assistant Attorney General to represent the state. I've handled all kinds of cases. This is a calling to me. This is something that's different, all right? This is something that's meaningful in the sense that if we don't do something to correct it, we will regret it mightily. We've seen to President Trump's credit, to President Biden's credit, to Vice President Harris's credit. In a bipartisan way, both political parties have worked together to try to eradicate this problem, because both parties have said, "We've got to have clean air and clean water." I've never met a human being that says, "We want dirty air and dirty water," right? "We got to have clean air and clean water." One of the best quotes I've ever seen is this. Reverend Billy Graham, who's no longer with us, but we know where he is, he said, "When we see the world as a gift from God, we will do our best to take care of it and use it wisely instead of poisoning or destroying it." That is so powerful to me. Let's break that down for one second. When we see the world as a gift from God, and it is the first sentence in the Bible, "we'll do our best to take care of it and use it wisely instead of poisoning or destroying it." I don't know that a sentence can sum it up better, and he said this way, way, way before we were dealing with this PFAS issue, in terms of when we got involved in it. It is obvious. It is obvious that we've got to have clean air and clean water. There are people who are hurting. There are people who have cancers. We've had folks come up to us after town hall meetings like this and talked about the fact that I have cancer, my sister has cancer, my cousin has cancer. But there's no genetic marker, and when we look at genetic markers, if there's not a genetic marker and it's not something you inherited, where does it come from? The environment and your exposure, right? So we've seen this in a lot of ways, and we've seen it with municipalities. We've seen it with business folks. We've seen it with individuals who've been damaged. If you're an organic farmer and you lose your organic designation where you can't sell your crops, you've been damaged because of PFAS. If you have a cancer that relates to it, then you've been damaged because of PFAS. If you're a municipality, and as Nick said, the city of Dalton, Georgia, through Dalton Water, the water system, Dalton Utilities filed a lawsuit 48 hours ago, 48 hours ago, right, against 3M and Shaw and all the manufacturers and everybody. Why did they do that? I'll tell you why they did it. They did it because they needed to do it, and it was very smart of them to do it. It's something that they needed to do because they need to be compensated to clean up the water, because if they don't, who gets to pay for it? The taxpayers. Everybody in this room, everybody in this room's a victim, potentially. Why would you have to pay for that? That's the craziest thing I've ever heard, right? So there is a need to move forward with this in every appreciable way. And as Nick said, the only thing that changes folks in life is when folks work together in a collaborative way. Now, today and tonight, what we're going to talk about, I'm going to break this down. I'll give you an overview of our team and the crisis in Northwest Georgia, how we're going to fight together. Erin Brockovich, who is the top consumer advocate in the country on the environmental space, is going to speak next. I have never seen anyone more genuine and more sincere about helping people than Erin. She will stay here till the last person leaves tonight. Some folks just showed up. They want to meet her because she's really cool. I mean, and I love her, but I'm telling you, she, like today, we met with folks yesterday who are present here at their house and met with reporters and went out and saw property. We privately met with clients today at our office here in Dalton, and our office is not far from here, and I welcome any of you to come to our office anytime you want. Set up a meeting, come see us, and visit our website. But what we're trying to do tonight in things like this is promote awareness, okay? I've found in my life, and I've found as a lawyer, that if my clients or folks that I work with that just the populace is educated, they usually make better decisions. But if they're not, if they're ignorant of it, and there are corporations that want to hide information and don't want you to know about it, that's how they take advantage of folks. And I'm going to show you some stuff in a minute where Mohawk is alleged that it actually was defrauded by Shaw, I mean, excuse me, not by Shaw, but by 3M, and all the fraud and the falsifying of information, which is really kind of interesting in our world. So our team, it includes Nick and me and our firm, Erin and Bob Bocock, and as Nick said, Bob's going to speak. He's the top water expert in the country. He speaks before Congress. He knows more about PFAS than anybody, in my view, in the country. And he is the perfect person to answer any question that anybody has here tonight, and he'll also be here to field questions. But you'll enjoy the information that he'll present, and he'll tell you, among other things, and he'll do a much deeper dive than I will about this. But just to give you a little color about PFAS and how dangerous it is, the toxicity that is dangerous in the human body is what they call four parts per trillion. And so you go, "Well, what's four parts per trillion?" Four parts per trillion would be analogous to this. If you took your bathtub and you filled it full of sand to the top, all right, and you pulled out four grains of sand, that's four parts per trillion. That's a tiny, miniscule amount of this stuff, all right? That's four parts per trillion. And it's dangerous for that to be in the human body. It doesn't leave the male body as quickly as it leaves the female body. It takes a long, long time. It's passed from mothers to children through breast milk, and the toxicity passes literally directly from the mother to the child. That's how dangerous this is. Our team also, and you can, this is information about me, but our team includes Nick, me, and our firm, but also Arnold Lennitken from Texas. We've got law firms like Arnold Lennitken in Texas, Sean Tracy, and others. I assembled and with our team the best and the brightest in the country. Because I'm going to tell you right now, if you just got like some Georgia lawyers that just were going to kind of take on 3M, a Fortune 500 company and all this stuff, they've got all the money and resources in the world. They've got law firms that have over 1,000 lawyers in them, and if you're going to take them on, and I played sports my whole life. I was always the undersized athlete who started on every team I was on just because of effort, I feel like. I didn't have the athleticism, but I had the effort and the determination. But I knew this. I played point guard on my high school basketball team, and I knew this. If we're going to match it with somebody else, I can't take them on because I'm not the best player. I'm not the top scorer, but I'm the point guard, and I know who to get the ball to, and I know who to hand the ball to here. And we assembled the best and brightest. We got Erin Brockovich, who's the top consumer advocate. We got Bob Bocock, who's the top water expert. We got Arnold Lennitken, who have resolved $25 billion, with a B, dollars in cases over the largest Fortune 500 companies in the country in the last 10 years. They are part of the folks that are on our team that represent people in Dalton, Georgia, that are our clients. You can see, as Nick indicated, our local team members who are positioned around here and will happily help you with anything or at our office. Most of these folks are local and are here to help. Now, here's the crisis in Northwest Georgia. I want to break this down in the interest of time and kind of move this along a bit. But 3M, Fortune 500 company in Minnesota is worth $71 billion. And this is what angers me, and this is what angers other people. They knew about this, all right? They knew that it was a problem. They knew it was dangerous. They knew it was hurting people. They knew it was killing people. You know what they did? They continued to sell it. Now, think about that. You've got cancer. Your property's been devalued. They knew about it. What'd they do? They kept making more money off of it, billions and billions of dollars, right? Billions of dollars, putting corporate greed and profit over human lives and safety. It's disgusting. It's absolutely shameful. But that's what they did. So they knew about it, and our mission here is to hold 3M accountable. Shaw, Mohawk, others, there's been lawsuits, and I'll tell you later about who sued who and what they're all alleging, but 3M started the fire. If it wasn't for 3M, the Shaws, the Mohawks, people here wouldn't have this issue. And there is an alternative product that could be used by 3M, which is not PFAS, and they have not used it, and they had the ability to use it. Now, to their credit and others, some of the manufacturers are changing things, and that's the first place we need to start, was not using PFAS at all. But this is media coverage from this. This isn't just me talking. Fox 5 Atlanta has exposed, more than 1 million Georgias have been exposed to the forever chemical. Clayton County, you can see the percentages there. Atlanta News First indicates the PFAS issue with regard to Calhoun, Georgia, and the Northwest Georgia problems. They were working on resolving a federal lawsuit. Hundreds of drinking water systems exceeded the PFAS standards. It could grow to thousands, and this is the drinking water, and this is going back to this one that was out of the USA Today, all right? So this isn't a locally Northwest Georgia problem. This is a national problem. Okay? Let's not be mistaken that this is all just in Dalton or all in, you know, Calhoun County or Whitfield County. This is a national problem. We just have a high concentration here now because of the industries that predominate here. So another issue with Calhoun claiming contamination and a lawsuit was filed against the City of Calhoun, and more information about it and the discharge, and this is from an ABC affiliate. Long-lasting chemicals found, Water Resources Management Specialists at UGA, and we've worked with UGA. I went to law school there. We've got folks over there that we've worked with that have helped with this space, that have done the research and found the problems in Northwest Georgia with the testing. Calhoun's wastewater treatment was polluting the river. City of Calhoun in the sludge, and Bob will tell you more detail about that. We've got, researchers have found issues with contamination throughout Northwest Georgia with forever chemicals. This is WSB. Atlanta Journal Constitution, these are lead stories, and this is all, if you look at the dates, most of this is 2024. But this is becoming an accelerated deal, where we were interviewed by the Atlanta stations today, which broadcast Chattanooga, has interviewed us tonight. They're going to be at 11 o'clock tonight. This is an accelerated thing, and it is a national story. This is not just us in Northwest Georgia. This is the United States. Now, residents exposed to this, including folks in Northwest Georgia, I want to direct this little graph to you. Remember I said that four parts per a trillion is bad? Remember that? It's above four, all right? This is somebody's, this is blood work. These are initials of people. If you could, if I could direct you to this little exhibit here, this is the danger line, right? You see that red line? All right. CW is okay. ME is kind of below it, but as you kind of move forward, you can tell here at the end that what the blood test results show, and how toxic this is. This is from blood work. Now, Emory is doing studies, folks at UAB and doctors, and there's been a commission study at Emory with certain folks in Calhoun County and other parts of Northwest Georgia are allowing people to have their blood tested, and they'll do that for you. And we can talk more about that for folks that are interested in it. But that's pretty alarming, obviously, in terms of what this has caused and the problems it's caused. Northwest Georgia and their issues with PFAS and lawsuits that have been filed, again, more information about this with regard to the chemicals itself. Initially, there was no plans, as this says, in terms of testing for cancer toxins, but that's sort of changing. This was back in article in 2023. But as we move forward, Rome was dealing with these issues, and Rome, the city of Rome, got ahead of this before Dalton or these other cities. Rome brought a claim. Rome was like, "Look, we get it. We got a problem, and we got to clean it up. We don't have the money. We're a governmental entity to pay for the remediation of this. What do we do?" And let me just tell you all this. This is just, there's no doubt in my mind, and I've seen it in my career, and y'all know this, but Thomas Jefferson said it about 200 years ago, "The only thing that anchors our civilization, and the only thing that separates us from every other country in the world, is the right to trial by jury and the right to vote." That's it. I mean, that's basically what we got. And if you think about that, what anchors us is the judicial branch, because the folks running for presidents, all right, you know, they've got an agenda, you know, they'll say crazy stuff, all that, you know, executive, I mean legislative branch, the congressmen, congresswomen, all the kind of nutty stuff that you see, and you see it on every network. You'll see one nut on the right, and you'll see one nut on the left, right? You just do. That's just a fact. But the judicial branch, the judicial branch is what keeps folks honest, because I can tell you right now, if you couldn't bring these claims against 3M and take them on in court, you think they cleaned up the stuff just out of the goodness of their heart? You think that you say, "You know what? We just think it's the right thing to do, just to clean it up. We're just going to pay a bunch of money to do it." Would they do it? Have they done it? Do you see them doing it without this? Right. That's right. Ma'am? Well, they've been bringing this stuff in by railcar into this community for the last 40 years, all right? And they've got scientists...
...that will regain fish...
That's right. That's right. And I'll share with you more detail about that and what's going on in Maine, because in Maine, you can't eat the fish and you can't eat the deer. And that's kind of what's headed here if we don't correct this. So here, let me show you a little bit more. All right, so Rome has, and let me show you this. This is our testing. We've been up here several months, and Bob has done a lot of testing. And Bob's going to do a deeper dive on this than I am, all right? But I want you to see what our testing has revealed here in your community, okay? This is what, here in our community, this is what our testing revealed. Remember I said four parts per trillion? Everybody remember that? That's your line? All right. Of the folks that we've tested in this area where we all live, 62% of the folks that we've tested your property, water, is over that line. See, can you see what says 4 to 50? That's 4 to 50 parts per trillion, all right? And if you go up 50 to 100, it's 8%. I couldn't believe that number. 21% is 100 parts to 500 parts per trillion. Remember, four parts per trillion is terrible. That's 100, that's, look, that's one-fifth. One-fifth of the property owners whose property, and we have tested hundreds of folks' property, I mean, their water, we've tested their water. That's what we've got. We've got, you know, 1% of them are 5,000 to 10,000 parts per trillion, 2%, and you can see the graph. But the bottom line is, this is a staggering number, okay? You're talking about an incredibly high percentage of problems related to the water that we tested. So with that, I want to kind of transition things into how we're going to fight together. And to that end, what we're going to do next is, I'm going to have Erin come up here. She is the top environmental expert in the United States. She knows more about how to help folks and has been doing this as long as I've been practicing law. She's been doing this for 30 years. I've been practicing law for 33. 30 years ago, she was in Hinkley, California, working on the PG&E cases, and almost single-handedly brought that deliverable and broad awareness to issues that were causing problems in Hinkley, California. She has dedicated her life to this calling and this mission. She gets calls, I'm telling y'all, from people all over the country, "I need help here in California. We need help in Maine. I need help in wherever," you name it. She gets that. You see a story break? Erin is going to wake up the next morning, get 500 emails from somebody, okay? She could be anywhere in the country, and what she's identified is the problem here, because this is serious, and this matters, okay? So I can't say enough nice things about her and where she is and the impact that she has, because frankly, if there was a town hall meeting and Ben Finley was going to speak up here and be by, along with Nick Jackson, I don't know, maybe three or four of my relatives would show up, and I have a couple buddies that I went to college with in Georgia who'd be here. Erin's the reason a lot of y'all are here. Thank God for her awareness that she'll bring and the spotlight she can put on something like this. But I really would appreciate everybody if you would all join me in welcoming Erin Brockovich. We're so glad she's here.
Hi. Good evening. How are you all? I'm Erin Brockovich, not Julia Roberts. Ha ha. It's been confusing for a lot of people, but that's another story for another time. You know, I was standing in the back of the room, just kind of watching and listening everything, and it's actually uncomfortable for me and hard for me to come into communities who I fall in love with, and I love people, and I definitely love our land and our water, and to feel like I'm always the bearer of bad news. So it reminded me of a film, Armageddon, and Owen Wilson's part, where he's like, "Just give me the worst-case scenario." And that's kind of... it's that truth that we need, because every community I've been in doesn't stand a chance to help protect and defend what's most important to them, their land and their water and their family and their health, if you don't know the truth. So PFAS has been on our radar for decades. Bob and I, and you'll hear from Bob, we've worked together way too long, that this chemical will become the largest leading emerging contaminant that this country has ever seen. And that's precisely what's happening. So we're here with true and real information, and Georgia is clearly a hotspot, and I want you to know, you are not alone. This chemical is impacting land, water, and the food chain in every state in the United States of America. So Georgia is seeing a big swath of it. I was just talking to Bob before I came up, because I'm kind of blown away myself, the people that were meeting 45 miles that direction, and 45 miles that direction, and 45 miles that direction, and hundreds and hundreds of a square mile radius that is being impacted by this one chemical. And it's not just one chemical, and Bob is a science guy, and he explains it better than anyone I know, but PFAS is a family of chemicals, 10,000 or more, of which we're just learning currently for maximum contaminant limits of about six. And so it's unnerving to think about the impact that it has. So I've been involved in it for a while, but we really haven't seen this exponential growth or hotspots happening. And so when I began working in Maine about two years ago, and there's some articles they have here, that really became a huge eye-opener for me, about this just isn't something that has gotten into the water. It is a process of taking biosolids and waste and applying it to the land and to the farmland and the PFASs in it that leaches into the water that gets into the food chain. That's where I just had this awakening, and it really happened for me out here in Maine. Now, the other state right now that is under, you cannot eat the deer or eat the fish, is in Michigan. And I'm thinking, my gosh, what is it? Have we done? So in Maine, it began with, actually, the USDA, who knew that PFAS had gotten into the cow's milk and was on the shelf, but it took them 15 months to report it to the state. So this farmer lost all of his dairy cow. It's now in the milk. You can't do anything else but have to kill the cows. And it was devastating to the farmer. It was devastating to everybody. And so as we got deeper into it, we began to learn from the farmers how contaminated their land had become, that they couldn't eat the eggs, that the state went out. It was in everyone's well water. It was on the land. It was in the soil. And so this is a moment for me that I just, it almost just, I felt very dizzy, and how are we going to get out here and educate everybody about what's happening right here in Georgia? So it's hard news to hear. You're not alone. There's a lot of information and many, many things that we can be doing. So this is the first step, is informing you about what's happening. So the law firm has been wonderful. Bob has been wonderful. They've been out there doing tests, and we can come out and test where you are as well. So this is the first process of you just showing up. You know, this isn't about me, and none of the work that I have ever done is about me. It's about you, and it's gonna be about all of us, and what's most valuable to us, and you already know what that is. The land, your farming, your water, your family, and your health. It has been a bigger honor for me in my work to get involved in all of these communities, because what I have learned over and over again and seen is, when we're informed and we stand up, we can make changes. And I've also learned something very unique about the moms. In every situation I'm in, it begins with one pissed-off mom, who's onto something, has a sick child, organizes with other moms, and they become an incredibly strong voice for change. So we're in Georgia now, and we will end up being in every single state in the Union, but there is a real problem here. And if I can ask, most of you here tonight, are you all farmers or living on large amounts of lands or concerned citizens or that it's gotten in your yard? You are? Okay. So what I have learned in my work with communities who've been impacted is oftentimes they see something, but they are afraid to say something, because someone will say, "That couldn't be happening," or "That's just strange." A lot of things, like the animals being sick. And so when I first heard about Hinkley, and you hear these bizarre things, you don't believe them, until I went out there and saw through my own eyes, animals that were sick, chickens that had rye neck, cattle covered in hundreds and hundreds of tumors. The water, pardon me? Well, yes, and it was. So everything that you're saying is correct and valid in what we see, and we hope, even being here tonight with all of you, when you start to say, other people will go, "Oh my gosh, that was happening to me, too." To answer your question back there, there's been quite a bit of science on PFAS, and in 2016 is where one of the first studies started to come out. There's no getting around the fact that this chemical is a poison, and its association with testicular cancer, its association with reproductive issues, its association with high cholesterol, its association with cancer and disease. For me, it's very frustrating. This did not happen yesterday. This has been going on for decades. 3M knew, EPA was advised, they created a guideline, and off we go. And it takes 20 years for some of these studies to come to fruition. So we now know, and 2016 was a mark that set everyone off, because the science was in on PFAS. And oftentimes, people, to your point, do see things, or they know something's happening, and it's running into a creek, but oftentimes step away and step out, because someone tells them, "You shouldn't be talking about that," or "You don't know what you're talking about." And they just remove themselves. And so it can be a scary place to learn information like this, and oftentimes things that we don't want to hear. But that's why I started with, if we just don't, if I just can't tell you what's the worst-case scenario and what it is we're facing, then I do you a disservice. And I've learned in communities, they deal with the truth. They don't deal with lies. They deal with the truth. But they don't. But that's why you'll deal with the truth. And it's a complete failure at many levels, including our agencies. It's a complete failure for all of us. But I'm not gonna believe that there's not a solution to it. There is. I'm not gonna believe that they're not gonna wake up, and they are, especially, unfortunately, it will take oftentimes a litigation for them to do just that. And that is part of our judicial system, and again, something that not everybody likes to see the lawsuits, but that's the process that we're gonna have to go through to get to the solutions, to get to the answers that you deserve. And when you've been trespassed and poisoned on, and you're gonna lose your land or your farmland or the devaluation of that, we're going to need the law on our side, and they are here. So it's horribly demoralizing, what we're facing, and that's why I'm happy you're here together, because when we begin to speak and share and let this guard down, that we're all experiencing something very detrimental, we will get more involved, more active, talk more, show up more, and participate more, and that's what's going to have to happen. This situation isn't about me. It's about you. This is your land and your health and your water, and I want you to know what's going on. And it's real, and it's not fake, and the science is there, and it's not exaggerated. So the best thing that I can do is to give you some tools, how as a person involved in this, can change things. And we always think it's science or logical. You know, when I got involved in Hinkley, everybody told me, "I'm not a doctor, you're not a lawyer, you're not a scientist, you're not this, you're not anything. Why should we listen to you?" I never had to be any of that to be a human and to tell you that what I was observing in two-headed frogs in green water just wasn't right. And so observe your farm life, observe what's happening around you, and listen to it. So my logic really was my common sense. I grew up in Kansas. My brother was a dairy farmer. My father ran the pipelines and built them for Texaco. He was out in the fields. He could see things in the water. He was always sharing these stories. But this is the gift we have, is our land and our water and our food and our health. This is it. So at a young age, I learned to fight for it, but what I did was see through the common sense of it all. The environment is telling you everything. And if you see these things, and you might, and maybe you haven't talked about it, but make the observations with your animal, with your land, with your water, with the smells, all of it, and don't think it's not telling you a story. It is. So common sense. I learned the power of leverage, working with people. This isn't about, you know, bank leveraging the land and something going wrong in a transaction. I learned that one plus one equals two, right? But really, in principle, one plus one becomes a thousand of us or more. You know, when I began my work way back in the day, I was 31 years old. I'm now 64. I'm really disappointed that 30 years has gone by, and I'm not sure we're that much better off, but I'm still thinking we're gonna turn a tide here, where we're gonna make that happen. I have four grandchildren. I'm in my legacy phase. I'm gonna fight to the end. I don't want to leave them this crap. I really don't. But I've learned that in Hinkley, when we were one and then two, nobody was really listening, but when we organized and were thoughtful about it and structured about it and realistic about it and stayed with it, that we became 600, 1,000. We were seen. We were heard. It does make a difference. We all know that. I grew up being taught about stick-to-it-iveness. That's a great word. It's a propensity to follow through in a determined manner, dogged persistence born of obligation and stubbornness. And I'm guaranteeing you, every one of you who've had your water and your ability to fish and eat it stripped away from you, will become dogged. You will be stubborn. You will become determined. And I learned, and I couldn't figure out for the longest time, why the heck, as a young girl, I was even doing this. Everyone told me I didn't know what I was doing, and I walked away half the time going, "Wait a minute, did I really see the two-headed frog in the green water? Because someone's gonna convince me I didn't." Why I was doing it. And it just came from a real deep place of maybe morality principle or love for the land and the water and the health and the welfare of my family, their family, your family, and for all of us. You'll learn a lot tonight, and I often feel like I'm the person that's gonna come back in on the other end, and I am gonna be that person and tell you that there is hope. And the inspiration and hope will come from you, and what you're gonna protect, what you believe, what you will defend, and what you will stand for. I cannot, the law firm, Bob, none of us can do any of this without you. This is your story. We want to add to it. We want to help you through it. But my biggest message tonight is, I feel terrible as a bearer of bad news, but this isn't a joke, and you are not alone. And this is the largest emerging contaminant this country is ever going to see, and it's going to take all of us to stand up and rise up against a force that we think we can't beat. But I've seen in 30 years, it has been done, and it will continue to be done. So thank you for showing up. You're the ones that will make the difference in how all of this goes forward, and I just want you to know, I for absolutely one am here to support you and an entire team, to get us through a process and get you to a better side of where you need to be, especially if your land and your water has been poisoned. You have every right, when that's been devalued, to fight for it and get back what you absolutely deserve. So thank you very much for showing up and for your time, and I'm gonna give it over to Bob now. He's a real downer, because he comes in with the real stuff. So this is my very dear friend and the best water guy around, Bob Bocock.
Erin thinks she's a cheerleader, but she kind of bummed me out tonight, so I'm not going there. My job's actually to arm you with information so that you can really take this fight to the neighborhoods. So what we're gonna talk about is, you know, how this happened and what brought us here today. A little bit about my background. I started in the water industry in 1979, reading water meters on roller skates. And so I worked my way all the way up from the bottom, all the way through the career paths. In the early 80s, after I graduated college, I was inspired by President Reagan to join the Army, and I went into civil affairs, and I built water treatment plants and wastewater treatment plants all over Southeast Asia for the Cambodian refugees coming across after the Vietnam event. And then I came back and worked as a utility director, worked for the Metropolitan Water District Southern California, which is the largest water treatment company in the world. And then, you know, ultimately parlayed that into working in the environmental space, which is what's brought me here today. So what is PFAS? PFAS is a group of chemicals. It is not a chemical. It's a group of about, you know, it says up here 10,000 compounds. I think we're right at about 11,400 today. And it's important to understand that they have various levels of toxicity and various timeframes for which they can be expected to be destroyed. They're man-made, they did not occur naturally, and they actually discovered them because they were looking for very tough, hard substances that could withstand high heat. So, you know, it came out of the Manhattan Project when they were building the nuclear bomb, and so it had to really be tough stuff. And that's where, you know, Teflon and Kevlar and all those real hard compounds come from, is these families. And when they put fluorine and carbon into a chemical vat and they get ready to zap it and make it, they make other constituents that can be used for different products. And so that's why they've come up with this long list of chemicals. They can be branched or unbranched. They can, you know, take all sorts of different forms of molecules. When Erin and I first got involved in this, we used to call it C8, carbon eight-chain molecule. They've since become, you know, carbon six and carbon four, and they're different products that are out there. They've since become, you know, carbon 6, and carbon 4, and there are different products that are out there. And they're used predominantly, as I said, for heat resistance, oils, grease, stains, and water. I.e., the ultimate chemical, which was Scotchgard, that became Stainmaster, which is applied to carpeting. But it also, the fiber in the carpet, so that it doesn't break down, so that it's tough, so that it springs back up, it has the same structure. So you have a multitude of different PFAS. We're finding in our samples, you guys have about 44 different types of PFAS in your water, and in the environment, and in the air and soil. Here, 44 different ones, six of them are currently regulated. The reason I like to put this slide up is for two reasons. Number one, they're going to tell you, "Ah, we didn't know what we were doing, we didn't know it was a problem, this is something that just came up upon us and surprised us." But in reality, we've been studying these compounds, and here's a whole list of different colored ones, since 1972, okay? And they knew that there was toxicity associated with them, they studied them in '76. You can see all the way up here till 2016 in the EU. The EU, you're starting to hear with all these health things that are coming out, including our Fruit Loops, you know, just having a little bit too much red dye. The EU prohibits a lot of that type of stuff. So you'll also read headlines that say, "PFAS has been banned, it's not going to be used anymore." Well, even in the EU, I was talking to Denmark on Monday, which is going to be the president of the Environmental Group for the next two years. And they're going to ban PFAS, PFOA and PFOS, the two most heavily regulated and prevalent chemicals. But they're going to need 35 million tons a year until 2048. So there's a ban for you, even in the EU. They're not going anywhere. They're very widespread, we're going to find them in everything. The reason that it's important to understand, it's not just a drinking water issue. And in Northwest Georgia, it's actually more prevalent in all the different environmental aspects. The soil, okay? If you're next to a creek, or if somebody's water runs across your property, it's contaminating the soil. Everyone in this room enjoyed one gram of dirt today, because the average human will actually ingest, whether you breathe it in, you touch something, you get it on your hands, you get it into your mouth, you will ingest, on average, one gram of dirt every day. So as it blows around your yard, you pet your dog, you put your hand near your mouth, you got it. Now, how did it get from the carpet factories to your property? It's important to understand that. 3M over here manufactures a chemical, either S3M, or one of their contract manufacturers, and then they sell that. You heard Ben talk about, they deliver the stuff by the railcar. Not only do they deliver the stuff by the railcar, but we have evidence that, "Yeah, that stuff over there, we're going to get a new shipment, 120,000 gallons, go open the valve up and dump it in the creek." That happened in this town. So we've got the 3M bringing it in, then it goes to the local manufacturers. If some of you saw the clip on the Atlanta News last night, you saw where the carpet would go underneath the bars, and they would literally spray it on. Well, if they thought about it, and they knew that it was a toxin, you'd just collect it, and you'd treat it, you'd reuse it, you wouldn't let it go out into the environment. No, they'd go in at night, they'd hose it down into the gutters, they'd pre-treat it, they'd take their own sludge to the landfills from the factories. And then what went out is clean water, either under a discharge permit to a surface water body, or to the sewer system, into the community drinking water system, or, excuse me, to the community sanitary sewage system. It basically would go to this wastewater treatment plant here, and it became part of the biosolids. When you flush the toilet, you send solids to the wastewater treatment plant. Those solids then become heavily contaminated with these PFAS compounds. They're collected, they go through a sludge press, and then they're on your alfalfa fields, they're on your corn, your soybeans. They were spreading this stuff, and continue to spread this stuff practically everywhere. And it's highly, highly contaminated. A lot of counties figured it out, and they said, "No more land spreading, no more land application." But they're taking it to the landfills. So now it's coming, and it's going over here to a landfill. And the landfill has a kind of a quid pro quo situation with the land application of the biosolids, and the repatriation of the landfill leachate. When it rains on a landfill, the leachate goes to the wastewater treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant takes the biosolids, sends them to the landfill, which makes leachate. And it just goes in this vicious cycle, and it's just continuing to move around the community. And until we cut one of those chains off, you're going to continue to experience high levels of contamination. And then ultimately, it ends up on your property. And that's where it becomes very, very, very dangerous. Now, here is the widespread occurrence. You're going to hear people say, "I don't know what you're concerned with, it's in the rain." Well, it's in the rain because the factories emitted out of their stacks. Wastewater treatment plants, if you go by a wastewater treatment plant, you'll see an orange flare burning the methane off. Methane at a wastewater treatment plant, methane at a landfill, that's just cloud seeding, okay? But the concentrations in Northwest Georgia were so heavy coming out of these factories, they'd stick in the fog, they'd hit the mountain ranges over here in the east, and they'd drop, and they'd come right back into the valleys, okay? We're finding it in spring water, all across that mountain range over there. So, there's all different kinds of ways that you can be exposed. It remains in the environment forever, okay? Those chains do not break down. Now, you can get them, there's this question of half-life in the human body. And what you're going to hear is that it follows a protein chain. The reason that they're so toxic is because if you ingest one today, and one tomorrow, now you got three, four, it just keeps building up in your bodies. Males, it's about eight to 12 years in your body, in your tissue. But once you get rid of it, it goes out of your body, it just builds up somewhere else in the environment. So you have it in fish, fish get eaten by the birds, birds get eaten by the other animals. It's in the deer, the deer eat the alfalfa that was land-applied, it's just, it's everywhere, and it just keeps going in this vicious circle. What's interesting is, you'll hear about it going out of the body in the eight to 12 years. You'll hear about it bioaccumulating. This is forever, this is 10 years. So the thing that really happened this year, that got everybody going in a pretty rapid response, was on April 10th, the US EPA issued the drinking water standard for the perfluorinated compounds of concern. PFOA, PFOS, that's Scotchgard and Teflon, and then PFBS, Gen X, and two other compounds regulated. So six out of 11,400 now have maximum contaminant levels. Why was it subject to regulation? When I make these presentations, and Aaron and I have been doing environmental stuff for better than 30 years, I always used to say in my presentations that if I had a grandchild born today, and the US EPA said, "We're going to start regulating a chemical in drinking water," my grandson would graduate college before the EPA would finish the process of setting a maximum contaminant level. It takes that long, because there's all this review, and science, and then negotiation, and then review, it just goes on and on and on. So on average, it takes about 30 years. The complaints in industry right now is, "Oh, they were quick to rush the PFAS." Well, here's why. I went to the EPA Administrator, and I said, "Michael." I says, "Why are you guys rushing this one?" "It's carcinogenic." "Yep." Well, I said, "Everything's carcinogenic." I mean, you know, if you put chemicals in your body that don't belong there, and they're toxicological effects, you're going to have, you know, cancers occurring. He says, "Yep," and he says, "That's the normal track." And I said, "Well, what else?" He says, "Well, there's endocrine disruption in your thyroid, there's, you know, it causes the bad cholesterol, there's reproductive harm, testicular cancer, runs the gamut." And I said, "Yeah, but you could say that about a lot of chemicals." He says, "Yeah." I says, "Well, then what really happened?" And it comes down to the fact that the, all of these different types of things that can occur are bad, but what they found was that the immunology, when you go get a vaccine, it's about 30% less effective. Now, I said earlier, it follows the protein chain. So it's not something that follows carbohydrates, it's not in the sugars, okay? So if a woman becomes pregnant, and the child begins to develop within her, the child and the mother have the same PFAS level in their blood, okay? And it goes on, at nine months gestation, the child born, the child's level is the same as the mother's. If the mother elects to breastfeed, the mother's PFAS levels go down, the child's increases. She is literally passing the PFAS off to the child at an increased level, while her body is actually ridding itself of these compounds. 90 days after birth, we go in, we give the MMR, the measles mumps rebella shot, it is now 90%, or, excuse me, 30% less effective as it was without the PFAS in the body, okay? We've in fact Scotchgarded the blood of our children, and made those immunizations less reactive. The bioaccumulation, this is what we were talking about earlier, where it literally sits in your body. The liver is where cholesterol is produced, okay? The liver is part of the endocrine system, it's both a gland and an organ. And as that liver fills with this PFAS compound, it actually tricks the body into making bad cholesterol, okay? So you've heard of, you know, diet, people that actually consume a lot of cholesterol have high cholesterol, weight issues, high cholesterol. They're actually finding that PFAS has a similar response, it tricks the liver into actually manufacturing cholesterol. Another thing that happened, literally the week after they set the maximum contaminant levels for drinking water, the US EPA, the PFOA, and the PFOS, Teflon, and Scotchgard, are now hazardous waste, which is why you've seen all the biosolids stop being land-applied. They're not even allowed to go to non-hazardous waste landfills. They don't have any place to put them, so they're going to non-hazardous waste landfills in the county today. This is what biosolids look like. This is your average wastewater treatment plant, the water comes in, goes through an aerobic process. At the end, it's sludge-pressed. This is an actual photograph from the Dalton area, and it's just dropped on the land, and they disk it right into the farm. There's a prevalence in this particular area to do this for sod grass farming. So you know there's a lot of sod farms in the area. It's kind of one of those things where you look at it, and you go, carpet, chickens, sod farms. So lots of biosolids got spread in this area. The US EPA has not established numerical limits for monitoring or reporting requirements for PFAS in the biosolids. In 2021, they set out a roadmap and said, "We're going to look at it." So you're going to see the US EPA set standards. So understand this, the US EPA has not set standards on biosolids. However, on August 1st, 2024, a few months ago, the state of Georgia did. And what the state of Georgia said was, "If you have biosolids, you may not exceed the drinking water standard at the property line." So that means if your property, your soils have been contaminated by biosolids, coming in, whether they were land-applied to your land, or they're coming downstream from others that did apply them, they're contaminating your property. When your property then starts to send surface water back to that creek and back to that river, you're going to have to meet drinking water standard at your property line. You're not going to be able to do that. That brings us back to this slide that Ben shared earlier. This is actually kind of a little bit outdated data. We've tested hundreds of sources of water in this area, and it's really catching me by surprise. I've done sampling all over this country, all over the world. The numbers and the levels that we're finding in Northwest Georgia are frightening. It's not, it's basically, it's ubiquitous, it's kind of everywhere. And they'll say that, you know, because PFAS has been used for so long, and it is kind of everywhere, and it could be found in rain at two parts per trillion. You guys have, 62% of our samples are coming back between 4 and 50, okay? 4 is a violation of the law, you get up to 50, it's getting really scary. The 100 to 500, 21%? So what it is, is it's not only high concentrations, but it's kind of high concentrations everywhere. We were working on some visual slides that actually overlaid our sample results in heat map dots, and it's kind of amazing, it's everywhere. As Aaron was saying, we met with somebody that came up literally 45 miles away. And it's just as bad down there, because they received the biosolids from these wastewater treatment plants on their farms. So whether it's spray fields, or whether it's biosolids application, that's how the PFAS found its way from the railcar into the factory and onto your farm. So it's very concerning. I'm going to stay and answer questions. I'd like to, is it Ben, if you want to come back up and explain a little bit more as to where we're at with the law, and then we'll be here to answer many of your more technical questions. Thank you, Ben.
Appreciate you, thank you so much. Thank you, Bob. I mean, Bob truly does know more than anybody else in the country about PFAS and the science. And he is the top water expert in the country. But I want to tell you, that's from the science side, I'm going to share with you the legal side, and to give you a little more information about that. So as Bob said, the testing around here has been, you know, really troubling for us with what we found. But PFAS has had litigation going on, and this is one of the cases that I think is very important. Municipalities around the country filed a class-action lawsuit in South Carolina. And in that lawsuit, 3M has agreed to settle that case for up to $12.5 billion with a B. This is the actual lawsuit, it was filed, as you can see, in South Carolina. 3M's the defendant, a number of these municipalities and wastewater and water authorities brought the claim. And again, it's settled for $12.5 billion, as you can see from MarketWatch, addressing the 3M and addressing the issues. I have been practicing law for 33 years, and you don't have to be practicing law for 33 years to know that if somebody pays $12 billion for something, they did something. You don't pay $12 billion to somebody unless you did something, you do a dead gum where you did it. Now, they don't admit liability, but I mean, the proof's in the pudding, right? I mean, come on. So this is what we've got with regard to this particular settlement. And here's the actual language of the settlement agreement I wanted to share with you. This first line, "3M has agreed to pay an amount not less than $10,500 million, and not more than $12,500 million." And so that's the actual case, this is, you can look this up online, but that's the actual pleading. Rome, and I mentioned to this to you all earlier, brought a claim, and resolved that for $75 million against 3M. So 3M paid them $75 million. Again, you don't have to be an attorney to know that if somebody pays $75 million, they know what they've done, and they know that they needed to pay this, and it's very obvious. But to Rome's credit, and the fine lawyers and folks that handled that claim, they negotiated this settlement so Rome could get money to be able to clean up the issues that it was dealing with. Now, there's a couple watershed moments that have happened in this in the last month, and these cases have been going on for a while. But this is just really, in our world, huge, and I think it's huge for everybody in this room to recognize the fact that Mohawk sued 3M. In our world, when we see these big corporations, they don't sue each other, right? It's like a person that they've hurt, maybe in a trucking accident, or maybe what they cause a cancer, or maybe their automobile that they put in Ford or General Motors is defective. They may get sued by a person in a wrongful death case, but these companies don't sue each other like this, which is really fascinating to us, because typically, the cases have lined up where there's a plaintiff, and then the defendants are 3M, Dyken, DuPont, manufacturers, maybe Shaw, Mohawk, others along those lines. For Mohawk to break ranks with that, and Mohawk to actually sue 3M is of interest. What's really of interest, too, are the allegations that they made. They have alleged, Mohawk has alleged fraud, all right? They've alleged fraud in this case, and they've alleged that they were defrauded. This is the actual lawsuit. This was filed in this county. This lawsuit was filed in Whitfield County, and that's Mohawk, the plaintiff, suing 3M. And check out the date up here, all right? November 8, 2024, at 6:35 PM, that lawsuit was filed by Mohawk, its lawyers and executives going against 3M. But check this out. In the lawsuit, they alleged 12 separate causes of action, and some of their causes of action include fraud, negligence, private nuisance, but punitive damages. They've also asked for declaratory judgment and contractual indemnity. All that means is, they're saying, "3M, we want you to pay us money because you hurt us, and we paid out $100 million to folks to settle cases on our behalf, we want you to pay us that money back." That's what these counts mean, all right? That's what they're saying. Now, Mohawk and 3M have had a long relationship with each other, and Mohawk's position is, it was defrauded through falsified documents, fraudulent information. 3M and its scientists knew all this stuff. 3M and its scientists knew all this stuff and didn't disclose this stuff to Mohawk, okay? Now, these are all the various claims, and I won't go through this line item with you, but the main takeaways include the fraud, the fact that there are very serious allegations of basically old-time lying, cheating, and stealing. That you knew about it, you lied about it, or you didn't disclose it, and as a result, we were damaged. Now, it's interesting, again, to us in the complaint, and you can look at the paragraphs where Mohawk says they purchased this from the defendants over decades. So it's sort of interesting that they purchased the product for over decades and have taken the position they've been defrauded for decades, right? So they say that, Mohawk is saying that the defendants, that's 3M, made false material misleading and incomplete statements, that they've defrauded them, and they provided false or partial truth information related to it and the potential health concerns and significant environmental concerns. That's their complaint, that's their document. You can go down to the courthouse and get you a copy of this and look at it, and that's what they wrote. That's their lawsuit that they filed, you know, about a month ago. Now, that's the fraud claim, and I'm not going to belabor that, but I do want to throw a couple things out at you all. Private nuisance is a claim, you know, you've created a problem with our property, and there are an allegation there. But this punitive damage claim is one thing I want to focus on quickly with you all in this respect. We're taught in law school, you got kind of two claims for damages and a tort claim, we call it. Not a contract, tort claim. You got compensatory damages, you got punitive damages. Compensatory damages are, that's to compensate you. You know, you got in a car wreck, you got $50,000 in medical bills, we're going to settle your case. To compensate you, okay, those are compensatory damages. Punitive damages are designed to punish. And it's not about compensating the plaintiff, it's to punish the defendant to deter them from engaging in that sort of conduct, that reckless conduct, that intentional conduct. Like, don't do that again, right? I mean, there will be consequences in a punitive way in a courthouse. We were taught in law school, and I was, I couldn't rub two nickels together, and neither could my classmates. And the professor said, punitive damages back then, and I got out of law school in 1991, it'd be like one of you students having to pay a hundred bucks. You know, that you probably wouldn't want to do it again, because a hundred dollars, you know, that's a lot of money to y'all in 1991. But for Ted Turner, you know, who is wealthy guy, you know, you might have to hit him with $100 million to punish him, because it's based on the net worth of the defendant to deter the conduct in the future. And so, when you look at these cases, and 3M's got $77 billion, right, as they've identified, that's quite the allegation for Mohawk to advance, that we want punitive. We want to punish you guys because of what you've done. And we've been working with you for years. So another thing that we believe is important is, if you own a business in Dalton, it certainly underscores the fact that you've got a claim. Mohawk has advanced a claim, Mohawk is a business in Dalton. If Mohawk brings a claim, why don't you have one? Of course you do. But it's interesting what we found with what we do, that Mohawk is now adverse to 3M in the ways that they brought this claim. Now, this is what's really remarkable. Shaw Industries has been the dominant player in this county as long as, you know, anybody can remember, right? Now, Shaw, within forty-eight hours of the day, filed a lawsuit against, excuse me, the city of Dalton filed a lawsuit against Shaw within the last forty-eight hours. The city of Dalton, through Dalton Utilities, has sued Shaw. And not many folks do sue Shaw, particularly the city of Dalton. I'm from Columbus, Georgia. This would be analogous to the city of Columbus suing Aflac. You know, the city of Columbus, they're going to think it through before they sue Aflac, okay? Now, the city of Dalton, to its credit, has brought this claim. And you can see, if y'all can see, the top, it says filed on December the ninth. Can you see that at the top of the page? It says it was filed December the ninth. What's the date, December 11th? Ah, two days ago, all right? So this is, I don't even see this in the local paper yet. I don't know, I didn't see it today, but it was filed two days ago. And it says, check this out, city of Dalton and Dalton Utilities has sued 3M, right? Everybody's suing 3M, but it sued Shaw, sued Aladdin, and those are the defendants in the case. That's the city of Dalton. Now, why did the city of Dalton do it? Well, in our view, it's the right thing for the city of Dalton to do. Because we need to, in the city of Dalton, correct the issues. We need to get money to be able to clean the water and to remediate and abate the problem from the folks that did it. And remember, 3M started the fire. But if the city doesn't do this, and you got to remediate it, and you got to clean it up, where does the money come from? It comes from the people. It comes from the taxpayers, which is absolutely crazy in my mind. Let me get this straight, I'm a victim who's been victimized. You've hurt me. I've got issues with my children's health, I've got issues with my property, my business, and I'm supposed to pay for that? You must be joking, right? And if the 3M executive gets a $20 million bonus this year, and the stock went up a quarter of a point, and I'm going to have to pay this? You've got to be kidding. So that's why, in a responsible way, the city brought this claim against everybody, Shaw and all of them, to kind of figure out, all right, what happened here, and we're going to need money to pay. So who has a claim? We've identified landowners, and we've looked at folks that have property, at least an acre. And what we'll do is, and I'll tell you about this in a little bit, if you want us to test your water, we'll test it for free. When we put this together, we didn't want anybody to have to spend money. You know, spend money on us as lawyers, and, you know, if we handle your case and choose to take a case, if you want to hire us and you have a claim, we do it on a contingency fee basis, where there's no money out of pocket for the client. If it's not successful, there's no legal fees owed. With water testing, you know, it's expensive. Our experts, like Bob, who are the best in the country, can do it and get your results back, typically within three weeks. May take longer now because we're getting closer to Christmas. It may take four or five weeks, but we can get that information back to you that fast. So if you've got property and your water is problematic, we feel like, I mean, you need to know that, you know, one way or the other. But other potential claims could be a business owner. Let's say you're an organic farmer, and you lose your organic farmer designation because your crops have been compromised in some way. You've got a poultry farm, and the chickens may have been contaminated. You may have a claim for business, and you have to have that evaluated. Recreational land users, and then individuals. We've seen a predominance of cancers, testicular cancer, liver cancer, breast cancer. And have had a number of folks come up and tell us various situations that they're struggling with, and may or may not have a claim. But we're investigating all of these types of claims. The theories are really the same sort of theories that Mohawk has sued under, the same theories the city of Dalton has brought a claim under, which are negligence, and negligence per se, if you will, or under Georgia law, or Clean Water Act, product liability, failure to warn, trespass, you know, you trespass on somebody's property. Nuisance, and the abatement and injunctive relief are basically to clean the stuff up. And then the damage is going to be the property value. If you have a diminished value, your property's worth less, and remediation. So diminished value would be, I've got a property that's worth this, and now it's worth less. We were instrumental, our law firm working with a number of other law firms with diminished value law in Georgia with regard to automobiles, with cars back in, and the claim basically was against State Farm, where if two cars are the same make and model, and have the same amount of mileage, if one of them's been in a car wreck, if it's been in a wreck, it's worth less money. And State Farm's policy said, "We'll pay you for all losses associated with your vehicle." And our view of that is, well, yeah, if we've got, the loss would include the diminished value. My car's not worth as much. You go try to sell the same cars, and one's been in a wreck, one hasn't been, I can assure you, the one that's been in the wreck has a lower value. So the Mayberry versus State Farm case, that's our case, it's on the books in Georgia. It was a seven to zero unanimous opinion from the Georgia Supreme Court, and that law is on the books. And that's kind of what we're advancing here. It's a diminished value that you have, right? Due to somebody else's negligence, or due to somebody else sitting here putting these chemicals out in the way they have. Potential personal injury claims include cancers, fertility problems, birth defects, fear of injury in the future. We've seen a large number of birth defects and issues related to that with the doctors we've worked with at Embry and UAB in this community. There's a higher level that we've seen, and with folks that we've worked with. And I know those are more personal issues that we can talk about, you know, one-on-one, or anybody here is happy to come to our office, and we'll meet and talk to you, and help you in any way we can, or give you the information that we have. So what we want to talk about is to join this fight. And a couple things to that end include this. I've got Aaron's book here. Aaron Brockovich has written a book, and it's entitled Superman's Not Coming, right? And I think it's a pretty profound title. I mean, you know, you can just read the title and probably know what this says, and you've seen her. So, you know, if you want to do something, you need to do it. And a lot of people in this world talk a good game, they like to talk about stuff. You know, they like to, you know, kind of say this or that. I've found that the difference in people with success in life is typically, you know, doing something. And I think that, you know, I have, and Nick and I represent a lot of athletes with name, image, and likeness, a lot of these college kids. And some of them go to play pro football, and we talk to them about their lives. And one of the things I share with them, I'll share with y'all, is this, that they, you know, as kids, high school kids, typically are measured by their ACT scores, or their SAT scores, or their IQ and all that kind of stuff. And I'm going to tell you something right now. They will never design a test that'll measure the heart of a man or a woman, and how bad you want something, and how hard you're willing to work to get it, right? All that stuff, that's a bunch of bull, in terms of measuring people by a number, and how they fill out a scan sheet on a Saturday morning. So here, if you want to do something, then let's do it, right? Let's work together. Because, you know, it's like the saying, that the only way evil in this world ever happens, and I do believe this, is when good men and women do nothing. That's really the truth, you know? And I got, you know, the older I've gotten, the kind of more spiritual I've gotten, but I find it interesting that if you look at First Samuel, chapter forty, you got, you got, the prophet Samuel goes to Jesse's house, and he says, you know, "One of your sons is going to be the next king of Israel." And they bring out like seven brothers, they're these big strapping guys, and this guy, Samuel looks at them and says, "That's not him." And they bring out the skinny little teenager, David, and he goes, "That's him," right? David was dismissed by his own father. Then the Israelites and the Philistines are going to take battle, and Goliath's there. And David's told by his dad, "Why don't you go send your brothers lunch," and his brothers make fun of him. So he's discounted by his own brothers, dismissed by his dad and his own brothers, right? And then he talks to King Saul and says, "You can't take on Goliath," and David said, "Let me do it." And so here's this skinny little teenager, seventeen years old, who fearlessly takes on Goliath. Well, I would suggest that's analogous to kind of this, right? 3M is a Fortune 500 company. I don't think anybody in here's got a Fortune 500 company that we can match up with them, right? I don't believe it. But there is something here that if you are motivated, and you do the right thing, and you are fearless and realize we are on the side of the angels, because we are, you can't just say that they're on the right side of this because they're polluting and killing people. They're on the right side of it, right? We're on the right side of this. So if we're going to do something, let's do it. Now, to join the fight, it's easy. If you look at your package, if y'all look at it, kind of the back of it, it's as easy as one, two, three, all right? Number one, sign up, get started, go to our website, come see us, come to our office. We're at Benjamin Way. You'll see that, I'll show you our address and information related to it. We'll schedule a time to come test your water. We'll come out on your property. You got to sign and give us the authorization to do it, obviously, or we'd be trespassing. You know, we can't just come on people's property and test their water. So get our authorization, and then we'll provide you with the results. Typically, we've been getting back to people in like three weeks. And we found some folks, most folks have some contamination, some folks have high contamination. We've had folks that have no contamination. But you deserve to know, and you need to know. So we're happy to come out and do that at no cost. And so if you want to line that up, it's as simple as one, two, three. But if you look in your packet and kind of open up to the back folder on the right, you'll see the paperwork and kind of what you need. And our folks are around here and are happy to help you fill it out or sign up if you have any questions. And you see them all around the room in their PFAS shirts. We've also got, you know, shirts and some swag that y'all can take when you leave. I just ask that you go tell everybody. Go tell your friends, your family, your neighbors, tell everybody you can, because we do need the critical mass of people in our legislatures and our congressmen and folks to know what a big deal this is. I'll tell you this, state of Texas, Ken Paxton, their attorney general, he just filed a lawsuit today on behalf of the state of Texas against 3M and these folks. So don't tell me this isn't real, this is fake. I mean, an actual state, and about twenty-six states have now filed lawsuits on behalf of the state because the states have been damaged. You can imagine the amount of property that the state owns, the state of Texas, and all the buildings that they own. So it's as easy as one, two, three. What we're going to do is, and just appreciate everybody being here, we're going to field questions from folks, and rather than doing it in a way where people raise their hand and ask questions, because some of this stuff is private, you know, and some stuff y'all may want to share with us. But Bob is here, Aaron's here, I'm here, Nick's here. What we've done in the past is, we will stick around until the last person leaves, and we're here to answer your questions, and anything that y'all got, we'll help you with it. And a lot of what we'll do is, with some folks, depending on your situation, and it may be a question like, "How exactly, again, do I get it tested?" Or it may be something like, "Look, I need to talk to you privately about this, and we'll set up a meeting to come to our office." But whatever you do, and whatever you're more comfortable with, we are here. This is our office address, if you want to write it down, and it's in your packet. It's 517 Benjamin Way. This is our phone number, our website address, and there's a lot of good content there. But I want you to be educated on this. Whether you do anything, don't do anything, I mean, that's up to you, it's a personal decision. But learn about it, be educated in it. You decide, you make the decision. But my job, I feel like, is to tell everybody I can, and then you guys decide whatever is best for you and your family and your situation. That's up to you, okay? Now, tell other people too, because they deserve to know. And I don't want through ignorance or misinformation or folks getting the wrong information. I've told you, I've shown you the exact lawsuits. Don't let anybody, you know, locally tell you any bunch of bull about stuff. Don't let anybody mislead you. I'm telling you the facts, those are lawsuits that have been filed by companies that are based here, or cities that are based here. This is the information. You got the top water expert in the United States of America who's here tonight. And he'll sit here, and you can come up to him and ask him questions. Aaron Brockovich is here. So we're here, we want to help, and it is a calling. And again, I can't thank you all enough for coming out here like you have on a Wednesday night. You got other stuff you can do, but it means a lot to me and all of us for y'all to be here. And we know, you know, you guys appreciate our efforts too. But let's work together, okay? Thank you again, and we'll be here to field questions. But I appreciate y'all tonight, and we'll answer any questions you got, okay? Thank you.